Welcome to our Capitola City Council meeting for Thursday, October 14th. We're just coming back from closed session. And before we start with the agenda, would our Clerk Chloe like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you Mayor Brooks. Hello and welcome to the Capitola City Council meeting. In accordance with California Senate Bill 361, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom. And there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline or mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on our website. As always, the meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Our technician tonight is Walter. Thank you Walter and thank you Mayor Brooks.
Thank you. If you can all now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So now this brings us to item two, a report out in closed session. Our City Attorney Samantha.
Good evening Mayor and Council members. We had closed session on the two items on the agenda and no action was taken.
Thanks so much. And on to item three for additional materials. Do we have any additional materials?
We did not Mayor Brooks.
And for item four additions and or deletions to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening, but I will note that on your consent calendar, there's a recommendation to continue a hearing, a second reading of the ordinance to adopt the library lease. So if anyone is here for that, that item is recommended to be continued till October 28th.
Thank you. Now on to item five, this is oral communications. This allows time for members of the Public, head of the City Council on any consent items on tonight's agenda or any topic within our jurisdiction of the city that is not on the general government. Members of public may speak up for up to three minutes otherwise, or unless specified by myself. Individuals may not speak more than once during our oral communications and all speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Do we have anyone from the public would like to say something?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone with their hands raised.
Okay, and also if you're watching, you can email us as well. Okay, see, and then we'll move on to item six. This is our staff and City Council comment opportunity. We'll begin with staff.
Mayor and Council, I have a very exciting announcement to make this evening. As you are well aware, earlier this year, Chief McManus announced the plan to retire coming up this fall. As Councils aware, we conducted a nationwide search for a new police chief that included a competitive testing process, as well as panelists comprised of community members, a professional police chief's panel, as well as a panel, internal panel that included representatives from the City Council, including Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Kaiser. Following that process and based on a strong recommendation from the interview panelists, I have named Captain Andrew Dally as our next Police Chief in Capitola. Andy began his career in Capitola back in 1999 after serving five years in Duke County with the SO's office there. During his 22 years here before Capitola, he's served in a number of roles, including officer, detective, field training officer, sergeant, most recently police captain. And on November 14th, he will get to add Police Chief to that list. So Andy's appointment is a testament not only to his work ethic and commitment, but also to the strong culture and dedication of our entire police force. So with that, please welcome me and congratulating Andy on this position.
Congratulations, Andy. We are so thrilled to have you as our new captain, or excuse me, our new chief. How dare I say that, our new chief of police. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, City Manager Goldstein and Mayor Brooks Council and the rest of the department heads, my chief chief, McManus here. I'm truly humbled and honored to take this position. And I'm really looking forward to working with all of the community, the department heads, and then importantly, the men and women of the police department. We have just an amazing group of people here. I'm really looking forward to just re-engaging with the community and just the projects that we can work on moving forward. So I'm really excited, truly humbled and very thankful. So thank you so much for this opportunity and I'm really looking forward to it. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And would any of our council members like to say a few words? I see Councilmember Bertrand and then Vice Mayor Story, Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Kaiser. The room is blowing up for you. Let's start with Councilmember Bertrand.
Well, I learned what a bear hug was the other day. I passed by Andy coming out of the police department and it was just like, congratulations, this is this big huge bear hug. So now I know what a real bear hug is. And truly, I remember when I heard your stories and I heard how you became a police officer in Capitola and you know, you told me how it came about. And I think we were doing a ride along. And so I've heard your story since the beginning as you worked your way up. So congratulations, you worked your way up and you've done a lot of hard work to get to this point. Truly, just an exceptional individual. I like your demeanor, I like how you view the community, and you're going to be a great asset to Capitola. I'd also like to point out one other thing. I'm really grateful for our police department because our police department has provided the options for people within the department to advance. It has provided the options to train people for circumstances that they will be using, needing to need, needing to use in this modern day police environment. So you've taken advantage of those. Most recently, I think you had a management training course and you're going to be put the task on sure very soon. Thank you.
Thanks Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Brooks. I just want to say I can't be more pleased that we have appointed someone that has been committed to the city of Capitola for so many decades, and someone who really knows the community of Capitola. And I think that's a big step forward for community policing. And so congratulations and with deference to Chief McManus, I want to be one of the first to say congratulations, Chief Dally. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thank you Mayor, Andy, Captain, Chief. You've done it all, so I just have to give my huge gratitude to you. And it's true, we all see what you do in the community and how far you've come with us and how many doors this is actually opening for our department and our city as a whole. And just my hat off to you, I'm so proud of you and I'm so happy that we, Kristen and I got to be part of the panel, which was like a huge thing for me personally. And it was like a great experience. And that aside, I'm just really happy that we got to this point. And congratulations, you definitely deserve it.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Yes, Captain Dally, soon to be Chief Dally. As much as we will hate to see Chief McManus go, I could not imagine a better replacement and someone to continue to lead our police department within our city. You've done so much over the years for our city and now to continue in leading this department is just going to be absolutely fantastic. So congratulations, we are so excited to have you at the helm in the police department.
Well, I think my fellow council members have said exactly what I've been thinking. Andy, I'm just so proud of you. And you have built yourself a legacy here in the city of Capitola. And this is just such an extraordinary community. And to have you lead not just the police department, but all of us into what I think is going to be an exceptional future for the city and for everyone here as we overcome a lot of tragedy and the pandemic and as we rebuild a resilient community. I'm just happy that it'll be you leading the way and supporting all of us. So congratulations again, I'm so happy for you and I look forward to working with you more. Chief McManus, we shall celebrate soon. All right. It's always odd because we're here in Zoom and I'm getting excited and I want to clap and I want us to jump up and down, but awkward. We're on little screens here. So we're going to move on, thanks again, unless there was someone else. Okay. So we're going to now move on to our rest of our council comment time. Do any council members have any comments? Councilmember Kaiser.
Thank you Mayor, I just have two things to touch on. We are doing our plein air art, I guess it's not exhibit. It's more like an activity for local and non-local artists to participate in our town and paint our beautiful scenery. So it's happening between November 1st and 6th. So I want people to be aware that there'll be artists out and about and that it's actually kind of a cool process to watch. They each have different visions of our city and of our town. And so it's really cool to watch the works be done. And then there'll be an exhibit at the end of it so people can purchase art and support hardworking artists, which is really exciting. Another thing on top of that, seeing as how we do all, a lot of events throughout Capitola, I just wanted to give a huge shout out to our Public Works. We've just gone through, we kind of get these weekends row after row of Art and Wine and Labor Day and Beach Festival and then the fireworks. And our Public Works employees are just a huge backbone of a lot of those big festivals and big activities that we are lucky enough to do here. You know, they step up, they do the job. And without them, we wouldn't be able to have those special times here. And so I just want to make a big shout out to them and to Steve Jeffberg, who is the head of all of them. And all the manpower is so necessary and much, much appreciated from us as a council and as the city, we couldn't do without you. So thank you guys very much for all of your hard work and your yes attitude. You guys are yes guys, so couldn't do it without you, thank you so much.
Thank you Councilmember Kaiser. Steve, don't dare tell us what the score is if you're watching because I'm recording it. Councilmember Bertrand.
Thank you Mayor. I had several people come up to me after the fireworks and you know, I walk around the city and just compliment us. And you know, I had to tell them it's the Monti Foundation, it's a partnership thing. And so I'd like to request that we have Mr. Monti come in and tell us what he's done, his history and the number of children's activities and programs that he's helped support in Capitola. That's my first thing. Second thing is, a week from this Friday, I will be taking a ride on the rail. It's a TIGM demonstration. I was lucky to get a spot, it filled up really quickly. I'll be glad to sort of give people an update. I'll be leaving from Santa Cruz and get off in Capitola or go back to Santa Cruz. I did attend the first night out at J Street Park and it wasn't as big as before because we didn't have a barbecue and a few other things that we almost didn't have it. So thanks for the police department for putting that on. There was a climbing structure there and I saw a lot of very enthusiastic kids, you know, climbing up, you know, handholds and stuff like that. It was just truly amazing. So and then another thing related to RTC, I've been appointed to a commission or a committee. I'm going to find out more about it tomorrow. It's called the CRCC and basically its function is to try to work on policy issues to help public transportation from San Francisco down to Santa Barbara. And as you know, it's been slowly going down the coast, excuse me, going down the 101 corridor. I think we get to, I'll find out more. So I'll give you some updates on that later. And as you also know, I was at the California League and I'm going to try to prepare a short report, some highlights that I think people might find interesting, and that's it.
Thank you so much Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. First, I wanted to share that I am the city's representative to the Santa Cruz Metro Transit District and we recently had a workshop with the board members, which was a great opportunity to learn more about the organization and where it's headed, our strengths and weaknesses, et cetera. And one of the things I wanted to share is that for those of you who do use the metro system, please have patience. We have a shortage of drivers right now and our drivers are working incredibly hard to meet all of our needs to address that shortage. So please have patience and if you do use the metro bus system, give a shout out to your driver and thank them for being there and continuing to get us around. The other thing I wanted to share was at last night's AMBAG meeting, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments. Once again, we heard about our regional housing needs assessment and the methodology that's being used to determine the allocation for each area. The final allocation for the housing that's needed in our city in particular will not be final until about February. But they do have estimates right now. And I just wanted to share that in the 2015 to 2023 Rena cycle, the last Rena cycle, our entire city had a needs assessment of 143 new homes that needed to be built. The estimate for the upcoming Rena cycle is 726. And about 214 of those are in the very low income category. So we have more houses that need to be built in the very low income category in this Rena cycle than we had required for all income categories in our prior Rena cycle. So I'm going to continue to share this information as we get more information coming in from AMBAG and from HCD at the state because this is really important and I think that it's going to be crucial that we stay updated on this information as we move forward so that it's not a shock for us when our final numbers come out and we need to be able to determine how to ensure that we can create opportunities for that kind of housing. And that's all from me tonight, thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Peterson. I just had a couple of things to share. I just first wanted to thank Senator John Laird for taking the time to visit our, visit with us staff and with our city manager over at our new library, was able to give us some new updates on what's going on and some recently passed bills. Also, on October 18th, I'll be having my mayor's town hall with our guests from the Central Coast Community Energy, RECE. The event will begin at 6:00 p.m. and they'll be presenting a presentation on understanding the value of community choice energy. And so to access that Zoom link, you can go onto our website. And then following in November, I'll be having one with our county, Santa Cruz County Superintendent, Eric Sabat. So all that information can be found on our website. Now moving on to item seven, this is consent. All items listed on consent will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. And there will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the action unless a member of the city council would like to request an item to be discussed for separate review. Would anyone like to pull any of the items that they see on tonight's agenda? Or consent, excuse me. This is items A through G. Okay, see and none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion with.
Still moved?
We have a first for approval of consent items A through G. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Vice Mayor Story. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Okay, that item passes. We'll now move on to our general government and public hearing. This is item 8A for a redistricting presentation. And tonight, all we're going to be doing, our recommended action is just to accept the presentation. And who will be presenting? Is this you, Alyssa, or Elisa?
It is. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great, thank you. And it's good to hear about the plein air event in November. I'm going to come check it out. So thank you for inviting me tonight. My name is Elisa Benson. I'm the Assistant County Administrative Officer and part of the core team in the county that is running our redistricting project for 2021. So I have a brief presentation, really just focusing on our process, which is a little bit different, given everything feels a little bit different in the last year and a half. I'm happy to take any questions. And I'm going to share my screen. I have two border colleagues here with me, so hopefully they won't be involving themselves at all. So let's see. Can you guys see that okay? No, I have to actually hit this button. Let's see. Can you see that all right? Great. So just very briefly, so this is obviously just going to be covering the county's redistricting process. As I'll reference in the very end of the presentation, there are several. And let me move this along. Figure out how to do it. Oh gosh, it's not letting, here we go. Let me, let's see, next. So just very quickly, I know all of you are familiar with this, but why does redistricting matter? And this is more for any of the members of the viewing public. So redistricting is redrawing those boundaries, district boundaries for purposes of representation. And we do this every 10 years as part of coming after the decennial census. The intention here is that these boundaries are drawn substantially equal to allow for fair representation in any kind of elected body. And as you all know very well, this is about who is going to be, where the elected representation comes from. Really key in these efforts are population equality. So you take that entire population of the legislative body you're talking about and you split it into the number of districts and then it's drawing those boundaries. And it's really important to have community voice and representation and drawing those boundaries. I think there's unfortunately a long history where that hasn't been necessarily done in a way that has been fair to all members of the community. So it's something that, what we really do want to hear what community members think and want in terms of representation. And this is how folks have the opportunity to get that elected representation. For us, for the county of Santa Cruz, we, well, I first should say, there was some legislation at the state level called AV 849, the Fair Map Act. And this was actually in 2018 and 2019. There's a smoke alarm going off in my kitchen, by the way. And that actually really quite significantly changed the way California approaches redistricting, really set up a whole set of new standards and expectations. And one of those things is it really defined the ways in which community participation could be established. So for the purposes of the county, the board in February chose to do an advisory redistricting commission. And there are some limitations on who could be appointed to those. One of the big ones is you can't have anyone who works for a current elected official who are someone who intends to work for the current elected official. So what you see here is the commissioners that the Board of Supervisors by district appointed to participate in our advisory commission. So I wanted to just spend a brief moment talking a little bit about that line drawing criteria that AV 849 set forward. And this is, so really it is this decision process is governed both at the commission level and at the board level by both federal and state law. I won't go into the details of this, but it, first and foremost, it's around equal population and complying with the Voting Rights Act. And then the state requirements, which AV 849 has now set up, is this list of five ranked criteria that need to be part of the consideration for drawing boundaries. And as well as the sort of foundational concept that nobody should adopt district lines that either discriminate or favor of any political party. So that's really the structure that I'm in guiding both the advisory commission and the Board of Supervisors process moving forward. So very quickly, the timelines, lines and phases, because of how COVID affected the census, the census collection in 2020, it really affected redistricting. And frequently, well, historically, we get our census numbers in April, which provides a fairly long timeframe for redistricting work to happen. Because of COVID, we did not receive redistricting, or we did not receive census data, we even got early data, in late August. And then there's a whole timeline that, you know, basically comes into play because of then the following election in 2022. So for us, we had started doing our planning quite in the spring once we had the advisory commission appointed by the board. In July and August, really, we launched a website. And by the way, the AV 849 requires a website and a whole bunch of very specific outreach activities. We developed some tools and we started to reach out to community organizations around promoting involvement and education about the redistricting process. In September and October, we moved more in towards our involvement, our public involvement and engagement work. And then really, we're right now in the thick of the line drawing mapping work with the advisory commission. And again, why this timeframe got so constrained is the data. We did not have the data for the county in terms of what does our population change look like? And we received that initially on August 20th. It was an early set that had not yet integrated what they call the reapportionment with at the state level, residents who are in state prisons basically then get identified and then the numbers for each county is adjusted. So like, if they were back in their county, what would that do? For us, that period between August 20th and September 20th, while the state was doing that reapportionment, was very minor in terms of how it changed the census data we had received earlier. But still that, you had to wait till that official data was available. So our commission with staff support, we offered four different public workshops, a general public workshop on September 1st. And then we did sort of regional workshops on the 22nd, the 29th and the 30th. And these were all, we did both a hybrid approach. We wanted to make sure we had optimal opportunity for the public to be involved. Unfortunately, we did not have a whole lot of public engagement. I think our most, our most well-attended in person and quite frankly, in terms of remote attendance, was the workshop we did on September 29th in Felton. So sort of in the District 5 area of the county. So we were, we've been, you know, not, we're not too surprised why we haven't had a whole lot of attendance. And that's because the data basically shows that we weren't, we didn't have very significant swings in terms of population changes by district. And I do have a slide on that if anyone's interested in that. Just as the current map stands, we are substantially equal by district. And the legal frame we use for that is that the variance from that number, and in our case, it's about 54,000 people per district with less than 5%. And as long as you're less than 5%, it's considered substantially equal. So even as it stands with our new data, there's like, from a number standpoint, we meet the substantially equal standard. So we, once that, those engagement work was completed, and I should say, we were getting public input online around the key concept of communities of interest. And that's really the idea here is how do communities consider themselves and communities of interest? So it was last- So it was last week, on October 6th, our advisory group started meeting to sort of take that input that we received either through the web, or in their own community conversations, or through the engagement process, to start talking about what potential changes would, they would want to consider recommending to the board. So, that started last week. We had a meeting yesterday, and we have another meeting tomorrow. And those are all brown acted meetings. They're available on our website. They are taking testimony tomorrow, and then we will be moving from that process to the board process. So that's really the next part of the slide that you see here, the October through December process. One of the features of AV eight four nine was it requires four public hearings by the board making, making that final decision. One of those public hearings can actually be one of the workshops. So we are counting our September 30th workshop as our first public hearing, and that was an evening hearing in Watsonville. Then, we will then have three additional meetings on this, a public hearing on the 26th, the evening of the 26th. That will be when the advisory commission's recommendations will be presented to the board and received by the board. Any of these meetings, we will continue to take public input and testimony. We will then have a, what is technically the second public hearing at the board, but the third in the count to four, on November 9th. We expect that will be where we, we actually expect to get additional directions from the board on the 26th about any proposals that they want us to prepare for them in terms of different maps and what those changes would look like in terms of population on the 26th. And then there will be another hearing on the 9th. Again, public testimony will be welcomed at that hearing. At this point, we're then planning for final action on November 16th. The 9th and the 16th are regular Board of Supervisor meetings. This will be a time certain item on their agenda. The 26th is a special meeting in the evening. And so the intention there is that they would actually adopt any, any changes to the maps on November 16th. One of the features of AV eight four nine is those maps that are being considered for adoption have to be published at least seven days prior to final adoption. So those things will come out, gosh, I shouldn't be able to do my math, on November 9th, or the next day, we actually have to have this published. We do, I have listed here this deadline. The deadline for the board to take action is December 15th. If we do not, then the whole process reverts to a court process. So, we just had planned this schedule where the intention was we got it done sooner than later, and then if we did need to, if the board felt they needed additional time, we would be able to fit in another meeting before December 15th. So this is our process, and really, we will be accepting public testimony from any interested party at all of these meetings. And we will see how things go. So with that, I just want to also point out, we are not the only ones who are doing redistricting. Of course, there's state redistricting, and then the city, the city of Santa Cruz is doing it, there is redistricting at Cabrillo, many different folks are doing redistricting. So that is my, my overview of the process. I'm happy to take any questions, and it, and we can just go from there.
I'm gonna. Thank you so much.
Share my screen, if I can find it. There we go.
Okay, any questions from council? Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks, and thank you, Ms. Benson, for that presentation and getting us better informed about the redistricting process. I guess I had three questions, and I was wondering when the recommended maps and plans come out after October 15th, whether residents who are going to be affected by those recommendations will get special noticing? My second question was whether the recommendations are subject to LACO concurrence? And I guess my third question is whether any of the, so far, the commissions meeting some recommendations and proposing maps affects Capitola anymore?
Okay, I'll try and get to all of those. In terms of the first, the first question around special noticing, we would, we are not planning on any special noticing, but we are planning on, when we will meet the noticing requirements, which would, are five days before the 26th, when they would come to the board, they need to be public. But we plan to be, you know, putting forward more general press and just trying to bring the public's attention to any of the changes that the ARC commission might be recommending. So, while there's no requirement for them, we absolutely want to encourage people to understand any of the changes that are recommended by ARC to the board. I should also just say, there is, there is a reasonable, there's a reasonable scenario that they would, they would recommend leaving the district boundaries as they currently are. So, I just want to mention that because we do meet that substantial equality standard. That said, we do have to also be able to say, and we don't think that we, by leaving them status quo, that we are somehow disrupting an articulated community of interest that's arrived since 2011. So that, you know, it's not as simple as like, oh, it's substantially equal, we can leave it alone. It's like, and we believe that those, those criteria are still met by, by that proposed status quo mapping. I, I do not believe there is any interaction with LACO on this, but I would actually have to check with my county council to confirm that. And when we read over the, the law, it's not making a connection there. So I'll just say that, but I would have to actually double check with county council. I will say that there have been some discussions by the commissioners that could affect Capitola, but that, those are not things that have been agreed to at this point, and tomorrow is when they will be looking at, at those, those specific proposals.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, let's go ahead and move this to public comments or questions. So now we'll open this up for public comments for this item. If you'd like to make a comment, you can send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine or star six, depending on the type of phone or landline you have. Our moderator will unmute you, and you will have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, we have an attendee wishing to speak on this item. It is Janet.
Yes, I just have one quick question. Where would somebody go look online to see what the current situation is? Or what's your planning, or whatever?
Absolutely. You would go to the, I'm gonna actually have to look up the website, because I don't know it by heart, but I think it is ARC 21. I'm gonna have to look at it really quickly, and I can probably, and am I able to put stuff in the chat, or I'm, because I could put it there too?
I think chat might be disabled.
Okay, let me just pull it up really quick. The website is, why is it not telling me? If you just, if you just go ARC, A R C 21 Santa Cruz, it will take you to the redistricting 2021 website. And there, everything is posted in terms of proposed map, map changes that the commissioners are discussing. The schedules are there, and we absolutely welcome anyone's participation in this process. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Okay, any other questions from the email or from the audience?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any other attendees wishing to speak on this, and I do not have any emails.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Elisa, for being here tonight. Thank you, Vice Mayor Story, for bringing this to our community's attention. For everyone watching or watching this later, please do check out the website to get involved and to see what's going on, and to be able to offer input, should there be any changes discussed for the city's boundary lines. Thanks again. We'll now move on to item B, and there's a part, there's two parts. So this is B, or excuse me, eight B, consider an agreement with Caltrans to include Highway One ramp signals in the adaptive, adaptive signal project. And the recommended action tonight is twofold, to approve an agreement between the city and the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans for installation, operation, and maintenance of adaptive traffic management system, and authorize the Public Works Director, Mr. Desper, to sign the agreement. And two, authorize the city manager to issue a contract change order to bear electric solutions to contractor for the 41st Avenue Traffic Signal Adaptive Coordination Project in an amount not to exceed $400,000 to add two Caltrans intersections to the project. Talk about a run-on sentence, guys. Oof, okay. Steve, this is you.
Evening, Mayor Del. This is actually a great item to have, something we've been working on. And see if I can share my screen here. You should see my screen now. I see it in a weird format, though. Fine presentation format. There you go. I'm sorry. Try that again. All right, the item for you is a kind of an update on the 41st Avenue Adaptive Traffic Signal Project. As you were, in August, not too long ago, the city council awarded the contract to bear electric to install the adaptive signal control system in the city of Capitola. And on the map that's on front of you now, the Capitola signals are here in red, and so those are approved, and they are gathering the equipment to start work on that. The county also has, is using the same system for the green intersections here on SoCal Drive and the top 41st Avenue. And at the time, we awarded the contract, the three, actually two intersections, but it involves kind of three signals here in the middle, were owned and operated by Caltrans. And we did not have an agreement with them to install a system in their signals at that time. Kind of just give you that inter-agency coordination I went over, this is I'm writing, form Capitola, bunch in, bunch in the county of Santa Cruz. And at that time, nothing from Caltrans. And Mayor Brooks did send a letter to the Director of District Five of Caltrans, and that seemed to shake things loose. So we have an updated here. Since that letter has gone out, Caltrans has agreed to, to the installation of adaptive equipment at their intersections. The agreement that's in the agenda was provided by Caltrans and reviewed by our city attorney. Caltrans has now provided comments on the plans for their work in their system. We're revising the plans so that they can approve them. And approval, and upon approval of the agreement and the finalized plans, Caltrans will issue us an encouragement permit, and we can get a price from the contractor to install those systems in the Caltrans intersections. This is huge. We've been working on this for almost three or four years now, it feels like. So this is a big deal. And the airborne grant that we have will cover the cost when we do the work on the Caltrans intersections. Just to give you an update on the timing, so the contractors ordered materials from the city, getting the controllers and the cameras and everything that's involved, it's about a four to six week process. Upon approval of the change order, which we're anticipating for the Caltrans agreement, they have to reorder a whole new set of equipment, so it's going to kind of delay things a little bit, four to six weeks. But they currently anticipate that we will start working on the city systems in November, and depending on how quickly they get the other equipment, we'll complete in December, January. Of course, with the holidays, you just never know. So it should begin by this winter. We're very excited about that. So the recommendations, I'll go ahead and read them one more time, since it's so long and simple. But we're wanting, asking to approve the agreement between the city and California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, for the installation, operation, and maintenance of the adaptive task management system, and authorize myself to sign the agreement, and to authorize the city manager to issue a contract change order to bear electric solutions for the, to add the Caltrans intersections in an amount not to exceed $400,000. That $400,000 is the amount of the grant that we have. We do anticipate being less than that, although we're not quite sure. It really depends on the final plans that are approved by Caltrans. And the reason we're asking for this advanced kind of authority for the city manager to approve the change order is just, hey, we don't have to come back to you, another item, another look at this project. And it may provide an opportunity, since we have fewer meetings in November and December, to just keep the project moving forward. So that's why we're asking for the authority from the city manager. And if that's my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Steve. Any questions from council on this item? Okay, so no questions. We'll take this to the public. Now I'll open this up for public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine or six, depending on your landline mobile phone. And our moderator, Larry, will unmute you. You will have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, we have an attendee wishing to speak. It is Janet.
Yes, thank you. I applaud you at doing this adaptive signal project. It has been a piece that has been needed to help with some of the traffic problems on 41st Avenue. As a resident of Gross Road, I would ask that once it was installed, you give the eastbound Gross Road intersection more time in the rotation during the day. The, I have been at this light as the third car in line and find that the light turns yellow just as I get to go to the intersection. This results often time in people going through a red light. There was often more than three vehicles trying to make this turn, and then the next time is more than two and a half minutes. And there are always cars waiting. So thank you very much for doing this, and I appreciate all your good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Any other comments from the public on this item?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to council for further comments and discussion and Who would like to begin? Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brooks. I would like to begin and end by moving with staff recommendation.
I'll begin. I've got a first from Vice Mayor Story and a second from Councilmember Bertrand. Any other comments? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Hi. Thank you so much, Steve. This is such wonderful news. I'm very excited about seeing this happen. Now on, on to item C. This is a consideration of first readings of an ordinance amending Chapter 18.02 Affordable Inclusionary Housing and an ordinance adding Chapter 18.05 for affordable housing impact fees. Katie, is this your item?
This is my item. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Brooks and council. Before you tonight is an update to our inclusionary housing ordinance, as well as a new Chapter 15, 18.05 to include impact fees for affordable housing. I just want to give you a quick overview of our affordable I just want to give you a quick overview of our affordable housing ordinance as it stands today, the process that we've been through over the past year, and how we've taken all the information that the city council has provided us in direction and put this into new updates. So when we look at our inclusionary housing ordinance, we look at the area median income for the average income defined within a geographical area. And on the slide is the 2020 AMI for Santa Cruz County per household. An inclusionary housing ordinance, it's a local ordinance that requires housing developers to include a dedicated amount of affordable housing units within a project. At the city of Capitola, we currently require one unit for every seven. Well, once you build seven, you're required to produce 15% of the onsite units must be affordable. On the slide, I show the inclusionary units that have been built within Capitola to date. Capitola Beach Villas with eight, Paradise Land with two, Pearson Court with one, and then most recently Terra Court with one. So within our existing inclusionary housing ordinance or requirements, we have a requirement that anytime you build a 50% or more addition to your home, you're required to pay a fee of $2.50 per square foot. Any new single-family home, there's a fee of $10 a square foot. New developments of two to six units of for sale are required to pay a fee of $10 a square foot. And as I had just mentioned, any new development with seven or more has to produce 15% of the total units have to be inclusionary units or onsite. And rental units that are produced are required to pay a $6 per square foot. So we, you may recall, some of you, Councilmember Kaiser was not on the council at the time. But back in 2020, we came to the city council with six policy questions. And I want to say that was last August of 2020. And we, the questions that we asked really had to do with the existing IHO and whether or not to keep the IHO as it was drafted or in place, or should we start making amendments to our IHO. So the first question we asked was, should we maintain the existing 15%? We asked about whether or not we should require rental to continue to provide an impact pay a fee, or should we exempt them from the IHO, knowing that rental units are a very valuable resource in our city? We also asked what larger development, of what we should be requiring when someone builds one to six units. And also, should we consider an in-lu fee rather than onsite units? Would the city council support amendments to the asset limitations within our IHO? And then should we look at alternatives to just onsite development within the IHO? So the next we focused on asset limitations. There was a modification to one of the mobile home parks, to their development agreement. And we talked about asset limitations within that first meeting as well, and really carving out new asset limitations for senior housing within Capitola, so 55 plus and meets the definition of a California senior housing development, and within our inclusionary housing for nonsenior. The current asset limitations are that we allow to 1.5 times the amount of your income when buying an affordable unit. And as people are saving for retirement, it's good to include asset limitations so that you're not, we're looking at the assets, but making sure the assets aren't too high in which somebody could buy a unit straight up. And then next, what happened over the last year is we received some grant money to actually help us answer some of the very difficult questions we brought to you. So we received money and utilized that money to do a nexus study to look at what it truly costs, what the need is within Capitola, what it costs to develop units, and also look at the feasibility of, at what point, knowing what, how many units we need to develop within the city, at what point does putting that demand on the developer become infestable? So we hired EPS consultants. They presented to the city council on September 9. And utilizing all the data they brought forward, the council was able to give us some really clear direction on what we should be incorporating into our draft update to the IHO. So you'll recall during the feasibility results, we did see that our current ordinance with the 15% inclusionary, is shown in the far left of this graph, was found to be not feasible because it's such a burden on the developer. But in combination with a, in in-lu fee, a developer giving, giving the developer a choice of going up to $25 per square foot, it makes that feasible, they have an alternative. So that was, that was one of the big takeaways. So now I'm going to go through what we heard from the city council and from this, from the information we gathered from you. That's what we based our draft ordinance on. So first, we heard from the city council to maintain the existing 15% inclusionary requirement for developments with seven or more units. In combination, as I just mentioned, allowing the housing developer an option to pay an in-lu fee rather than produce the required inclusionary housing units onsite to ensure that the project could be feasible consistent with the study. Next, we were directed to update the city's affordable housing in in-lu fees and adopt new housing impact fees as supported by the study. So the city council directed us to add affordable housing impact fees and for multifamily rental developments, keeping that at $6 a square foot, adding an affordable housing impact fee for those structural additions that are greater than 50%, keeping that at $2.50 per square foot. And then the increased fee comes into effect for those developments that are six or less. It would be a new impact fee of $25 a square foot. And then allowing an in-lu fee, so where they have an option to developing onsite units for when there's seven or more units, also of $25 per square foot. So these first three fees that we mentioned up top, the affordable housing impact fee, this is the area in which we're creating the new municipal code, Chapter 18.05, which is, the first reading tonight is for that. Because legally, the in-lu fee should be tied to an in-lu option of seven or more units for your inclusionary housing fee. And those, anything with less than seven units, we're making our, we're updating our ordinance to be more legally sound and adding an impact fee. The next policy item was the discussion on those asset limitations. So within our normal asset limitation, we have the 1.5 times the annual household income and added a $500,000 in qualified retirement plans with an annual increase tied to CPI. Also added a new asset limit for designated affordable senior housing developments for 55 plus in age that are not in a mobile home park to three times the annual household income, and increase the $500,000 exception in qualified retirement accounts to 1 million and to let that increase annually according to CPI. And then third, to continue to govern asset limitations of mobile home parks through recorded agreements and administrative policies as applicable. And lastly, we also considered alternatives to onsite production and in-lu fees. And the two that we thought were, that could be utilized within Capitola, one being off-site developments, that the developer may provide affordable units off-site on another site in Capitola city limits. This is when two or more developers work together. And it's just to provide an option to a developer. The second is a land dedication. And this you see often occur within housing developments. The land dedication is when the developer can dedicate, rather than provide the in-lu fees, could dedicate a couple acres of land to the city in which the city and a nonprofit, or even the developer could contribute to develop the onsite affordable housing. I know that currently, I think there's a project in Watsonville that's structured this way. And in meeting with some affordable housing experts locally, I've heard that this is just a great tool to have in our toolbox. So there's other requirements. But one of the most important requirements that we've listed within this option is that the overall increase in affordable housing units would have to be 10% above what a project could provide on its own within our inclusionary housing ordinance. Also, within the update, we've made quite a few administrative amendments. It was difficult, if you owned an inclusionary unit, to know exactly what was expected at port of you at the time of sale and at the time of purchase. So we've really cleaned up the ordinance to make this more easily understandable. We also plan on adopting a policy to really outline that for the public, for the owners of our inclusionary units. So we've updated the findings to be consistent with that most recent housing element text. And just more specificity on what the process is with this ordinance. So I won't go through all of these, but just really cleaned it up and made it easier to understand. So from all of that policy direction from the city council, we've drafted two ordinances. One is for Chapter 18.02. It's an amendment to our affordable inclusionary housing. And then adding Chapter 18.05 with the Capitola municipal code for affordable housing impact fees. And with that, our recommendation tonight is to introduce the first two readings of those ordinances, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Council members, any questions for Katie? Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you again, Mayor Brooks. Katie, yeah, thanks for your recording and bringing this back to us. I had a couple of questions. And one is concerning the proposed ordinance language. And this is on the packet page 50. And it's some item B on that page. And it's, the states that the housing developer may, in addition to other options, have the option of reducing the entire interior amenity level of affordable housing units. And I guess, I just wanted to see if we had any potential issues with affordable housing, you know, becoming, let's say, scaled down in quality based on this option. And particularly, you know, maybe why we have this? And if it's in relation to the in-lu fee as an alternative to the in-lu fee, and if they were to build a unit instead, but they remove many of the amenities for the affordable portion of it, how that compares in cost and benefits, you know, to the, to our housing stock? And, you know, my other question is on the off-site development, which I think I'm generally supportive of. But I'm unclear as to when would, if there's a time limit to when they would have to actually bring that off-site affordable housing online?
Okay.
Those are my questions.
Okay. For the, for the first one, so I'm showing the screen right now. You can see, I think you're asking about E. And the housing development, project developer shall have the option of reducing the interior amenity level. And it, previously it said and square footage. And I think back in that August meeting, we got direction that we could remove the, you know, decrease square footage for the affordable housing unit. But for the amenity level, I think that's referring to maybe that brand of stove or dishwasher within your kitchen. So that it could be if, if you're doing a really family development within the affordable unit, they don't have to be the most high-quality, you know, the best quality brands if that's what the rest of the development is getting. So I think that is what that standard relates to. Does that clarify your question?
Well, I think it clarifies my question. I'm not sure if it addresses my concern. And I guess I was going to, with our history with this particular ordinance, whether we've run into any situations or if there's a possibility here that the affordable housing is going to be significantly downgraded based on this ordinance. You know, having, I mean, having a less high-end stove, that, that, you know, that's probably acceptable. But, you know, in terms of, you know, what, did they remove closets? Or make the closet smaller? Or, I think in many ways, make the affordable housing unit be, I guess, less than what the project is meant to be. If you, I mean, I hope that expresses my concern. And I'm just asking whether, in our experience, there has been any issues along this line in the past with this particular term?
So I, I do know that a developer has in the past opted to decrease the size of a unit in the past. And that's why we, it, it kind of looks funny when you go to see that development, see this one much smaller unit, and know that's the affordable unit. In terms of the interior amenities, I know when I went, walked through Terra Court, the developer did not take advantage of this section of code. It was available to them to take advantage of, but they utilized the same products throughout within the affordable unit. They actually came to us to change which unit was affordable halfway through the project. And they weren't concerned, you know, they hadn't planned to make any differences in the, like, grade of materials they were utilizing. So I do understand your concern, but I haven't experienced, to date, anyone taking advantage of it within the one unit that's been produced since I've been here. So as for your second question, that is under the alternatives. Going to scroll down. So here's the alternative compliance options. The first one is regarding that off-site. And you asked about time limits. So the time limit says the construction of the off-site affordable housing unit may not have commenced prior to the first approval of the market rate housing development project. So they can't be, you couldn't have a project that was already in process and a developer come in and say, actually, we're going to buy those units that are already in process and make those our affordable units. Because really what you're trying to achieve is creating more units for the city for inclusionary. And then the second part of that is, I think is addressed in this next paragraph, that the final inspection for occupancy of the market rate unit in the housing development project will be granted only after the final inspections are completed for the off-site affordable units. So those off-site units have to be produced prior to occupancy of the new unit.
Got it. Yeah, thank you. That addresses my concern.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I had a similar question to Sam's question, the second one. But I just was curious, what's magic about seven units?
Seven units is the standard we've had in place since the ordinance came in to being. I think it's where you establish your 15% one in seven.
Yeah. Because I think some of the comparable cities had four units. I can't remember right now. And so my point to the city council, I'm not proposing changing it, but we may think about this in the future, is that, you know, the size of projects. about this in the future, is that, you know, the size of projects may preclude getting an affordable unit. It's probably much easier for someone to build something that's smaller and then just pay the in-lug fee. But if we had it as a threshold that was lower than seven, we might get more affordable units. So I had a similar question to Sam's, so maybe a different take on it. You mentioned that another entity could be one of the partners in providing the affordable unit, is that correct? I think, not alternative. And so if that's the case, I just want to confirm that. What do you mean by another entity? Another developer or what?
So within the, the first scenario of the alternative compliance option, it's for off-site, so two developers, if you're, if they're developing two different sites, they could work together to propose to have the affordable housing on a different site.
Yeah, that's what I thought you meant. So, so this means there's going to have to be a contract on one of the developers, and, you know, they could have a stumbling block in execution of their project, and, you know, maybe one site is already flushed out and there's no affordable housing. So I was just wondering how that's going to be dealt with.
Yeah, I honestly, I do not think that this alternative will be utilized that often, but we're, we're tasked with coming up with some alternatives. I do think the, the second alternative of being able to dedicate land is a tool that we'll probably see. But the coordination that would have to occur and the timing for, to have two different developers working together, not allowing occupancy until all the inclusionary units have been built, it would, it would be a tricky one, but we would have definitely agreements in place that, in which the developer would have to follow prior to sale of the market rate unit.
Okay, well, yeah, that's my concern, and I think I share it with Sam. There is some legal coordination there. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, so I'll open this up to public, public comment for this item. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine or star six, depending on which landline or mobile phone you have. Our moderator will unmute you, and you will have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees wishing to speak on this item, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay. Then we'll bring this back to council for further comments and discussion. Councilmember Peterson.
I'd like to move approval of the staff recommendation.
I'll second that, and I do have a comment.
Okay, we have, before we do, councilmember Peterson, I'm going to ask for a quick friendly amendment. We need to take these items separately this evening for item C. So this would be item C1, introduction of first reading, and if you could maybe make the first, your motion for item one, if that's, if you so choose. We'll take them separately.
Sure, so I'll make a motion to approve item C1 as recommended by staff.
I agree.
Councilmember Bertrand, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a first and second for item C1 to introduce for first reading by title, only waiting for the reading of the text and ordinance amending chapter 18.02 of the Capitol Municipal Code Affordable Inclusionary Housing. Samantha, if you're listening, that was for you. Councilmember Bertrand, before I call roll call, is this the comment you wanted to make here for this particular section?
Well, in general, it's a comment, if I may. I, I just want to thank staff for coming up with the, the grant and giving us guidance based on the Nexus study that was very helpful. It was a detailed study, but I really appreciated it, and thank you again.
Thank you, councilmember Bertrand. So can I have a roll call for item C1?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Hi. This item passes unanimously. Now looking at item C2.
I can make a motion on item C2 to introduce for first reading by title, only waiting for the reading of the text and ordinance adding chapter 18.05 of the Capitol Municipal Code Affordable Housing Impact Fee. First, Samantha.
I'll second.
So we have a first from councilmember Kaiser and a second from Vice Mayor Story. Any other further comments? Well, I'd like just to really quickly piggyback off of what councilmember Bertrand mentioned, was that this has been a lot of work over many, many months. And Katie and your team, you've done an exceptional job of really separating each issue, allowing enough time and space for conversation, and really helping me understand the complexities of such a really complicated issue. And this particular IHO will have a significant impact on our, on the city of Capitol and its future. So really, thank you for all your time. Okay, that's your roll call.
Okay, councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, this item passes. We'll now move on to item 8D. This is green waste franchise agreement. Whose item is this?
Larry, how about? Yes, it is mine. Sorry, I was trying to get my screen ready to share. So I'm going to try that right now. Okay, so I hope you see the screen. And so this is, this is the green waste recovery franchise agreement with the city of Capitol. And just make sure everyone can see the screen, okay?
Yes.
Just a little bit of history. Green Waste Recovery has been the Capitol franchise waste hauler since 2008. Updates were made to the agreement in 2010 and 2012. The current franchise agreement expires at the end of 2022. Just kind of a background, green waste is the hauler. They, they collect it and they transport it for disposal. Right now, they take, the garbage goes, regular garbage, yard waste, and organics go to the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. And recycling goes to Green Waste Facility in San Jose. In addition, green waste is the franchise hauler in, for Santa Cruz County as well as Scotts Valley, and they have a strong relationship with the Monterey Regional Waste Management District as well, because they are the hauler for seven of the member agencies of that, of where we dispose. And going into that, last year at this time, it seems, doesn't seem that long ago, but it was, it was a year ago, the city agreed to a new disposal agreement with the Monterey Regional. The disposal rates will be increasing over the next few years, finalizing at 95% of the member rate at the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. At the same time, as part of the, the rate increases there, as well as what we're talking about here, state of California's passed a number of, you know, kind of recycling and waste management type laws. The most, the largest right now we're dealing with is SB 1383, which will really increase the cost of collection disposal with some of, just a few of these requirements. The, the goal of 1383 is to help remove organics from landfills. Were required is what is to increase education and outreach to customers, have to monitor contamination much more diligently and significantly than in the past, and reporting has to be done to CalRecycle at the state level. This updated agreement extends the franchise agreement with green waste through 2030. This is actually the same timeline which we want it to be on as Santa Cruz County and city of Scotts Valley. So if there is some changes, we can all kind of work together to, to figure out what to do, because it is tough being a small, you know, an island around, surrounded by, you know, a larger agency. So we would like to work together if it comes down to that, which we, at this point, we don't see a reason it would. Included in the 1383 compliance requirements, organics collection for all customers based on the disposal capabilities at Monterey Regional. At this point, residential organics is to begin, beginning of the year. We've got to remember that green waste can take whatever, whatever they can to the disposal, but if the disposal site doesn't have the capability to process it correctly, it doesn't do any good. So I think everybody's on board, working together. So as these capabilities at the Monterey Regional change, we're going to come back and make sure our agreement reflects those changes. The other thing is that we have to review and document customer containers much, again, much more diligently for contamination, and then follow up with those, with those folks and report on it as well. Public education, as we talked about, is a big piece of this, as is reporting to CalRecycle. And I can tell you from firsthand, our reports to CalRecycle have gotten significantly larger in the last couple of years, and I'm sure they're going to continue to be that way for both ourselves as well as the hauler. The other addition to this is green waste is in the middle of kind of a company reorganization. So we added a, a section to allow for a kind of a short-term change in control and a long-term as well. And we will be working with some of the other agencies to do our research on this, to make sure that it, it's okay as they move forward in the process. So the big thing is, with all these requirements, rates are increasing by approximately 23% January 1st of this year. This includes the cost of disposal increases, the increased requirement, requirements. It also includes in 2020, because we were trying to get this done earlier, we deferred the increase at January 1st, 2020. So it does include some of that. And also includes increased organics collections. We mentioned, hopefully, first of the year, we're going to start, be able to do it for residential customers as well. One of the things they did is, because the, the previous agreement with the Marina, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District had a CPI escalator, basically the same as our, our one with green waste, so they could put all of those together and come up with a rate. Well, now our rates are going to be, at the disposal site, will be increasing a little more differently over time. So in the rates, we've separate, or well, green waste has, and we've agreed, to separate the collection from the, the hauling and collection and transportation. So the disposal will be kind of a separate line item on the rates. For reference, 35 gallon carts, which are the most common, will be increasing by $4.11 a month to $22.26 a month. This, for reference, is still the lowest cost per disposal of that size in Santa Cruz County. So with that, the recommendations to authorize city manager to enter into an amended and restated franchise agreement with green waste recovery for collection, disposal of garbage, recycling, organics, food waste, yard waste, and construction demolition degrees. I am here for any questions, and also on the line are Emily Hansen and Tracy Adams of Green Waste Recovery, if you have any questions for, for either of them. So at the point here for any questions.
Thank you, Larry. Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, how do you define organic waste? I'm just trying to orient myself.
Well, I, I can say that, that is, that, it's a, it's a bit of a moving target. I mean, that's going to be part of what is going to be coming down with education, as well as what Monterey Regional can do. I don't know if we have the details yet. If I could, I, we could have, we don't have our, our local general manager on the line, but it is, it is kind of a variable, it's kind of a moving target at this point. Would you like to hear from the folks at Green Waste, if they have a, maybe a better definition at this point?
The informants, yeah.
Well, right, right.
Sure, are Emily or Tracy? Would you view, Emily?
I'm going to allow Emily to talk. Emily?
All right. Greetings, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Maresco is on the line. He's not on the Zoom link, so you might, you might see his phone number, but he's definitely present. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to, to present this item. The, the challenge with this term of organics is that it is a bit of a moving target. So we've been threading the needle in partnership with the, the city of Capitol, working with the state of California, and also with, of course, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. So an, an important facet of the new collection program, and the reason that, the primary reason that the rates are increasing is that every customer, every residential customer that presently has a yard waste container, will be able to add food waste to that yard waste container. So in, in terms of residential service, the, the current program is for what we call clean green yard trimming. So presently, you would be able to put apples from your backyard or a pumpkin into your yard trimmings container, but the moment that any edible items go into the kitchen or inside your house, the regulations treat those differently. That becomes kitchen scraps and food waste. So the regulations through SB 1383, as Larry mentioned, have expanded to attempt to get as much organics out of landfill as possible. So the, the best opportunity that we had to make the program cost-effective for the customers and allow our services to provide the city with SB 1383 compliance for residential customers is to add that food waste to the green container. On the commercial side, we will still have a source-separated organics program as well. That is presently what we call a clean food scrap program. There will be opportunity for some customers, you know, not, for example, the Esalenon customers, but for customers, you know, let's say a Gil's Bakery that has some incidental yard trimmings as well, they would be able to use their new container for both their food scraps as well as their yard trimming. The challenge in all of this is that the definition of what's allowed in those containers is driven by the processing facility, in this case, the Monterey Regional Waste Management District. So as Larry mentioned, we are working in partnership with the Monterey Regional Waste Management District to get a finite list of exactly what is going to be accepted in these organic containers, and what is going to be what we call non-acceptable in those containers. And then, as Larry mentioned, the burden of outreach and educating the community on what is and isn't allowed in each of the containers, that is the responsibility of green waste under the franchise agreement.
Thank you. I have one other question, Larry, and a comment. So I think the, the governor signed in a new ord, a new law, and I understand that we're going to be limiting what plastics we actually recycle. I think hard plastics and a couple of other categories are not going to be recycled because we don't have a market for it, or there's no way to process it. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that, is this correct?
I, I. You can take that, Larry, if you'd like.
Yeah, absolutely, because I'm not aware of it, right? So thank you very much.
Yeah, so similar to the challenge with SB 1383, which is the Short-lived Climate Pollution Reduction Act to keep the organics out of landfills, the state is looking to, to the extent possible, standardize things in the state. As you all, I'm sure, are aware, looking, flipping over your yogurt container and looking at the chasing arrows sign to try to figure out whether or not it's recyclable, or whether it's accepted in your program, is incredibly difficult and confusing and complicated for the consumers. You could live in the city of Santa Cruz, but you work in the city of Capitol, and those pro, those collection programs are different. So the state has been trying to standardize that so that the producers of those materials can take what we call extended producer responsibility and do a better job of labeling things. However, you guys will remain unimpacted because we process your recyclable materials. So we have, Green Waste Recovery owns and operates a material recovery facility in San Jose. We bring the recyclables from the city of Capitol to our facility in Watsonville. We load those on a larger trailer, we bring those materials over to our San Jose facility for processing. And we have perhaps, if not the most expansive list of items that we accept in the blue recyclables containers. And the reason that we do that is because of our commitment to system. And the reason that we do that is because of our commitment to sustainability and the fact that we do not own a landfill. It is our goal to keep as much material out of the landfill as possible because we have to pay somebody else to bury it in the ground. So since 2008 and even earlier, when we developed our new and improved state-of-the-art processing facility, we have really done a lot of investment in producing very clean commodities, cleaner than the industry standard. So we continue to enjoy markets for materials that a lot of companies that run these recovery facilities don't have access to. So the, I know that was a long way to answer the question, but I think it's an important one, which is the city remains unimpacted by that new legislation because we go above and beyond and we're not the lowest common denominator.
Wow. That's great to hear, for those of us who've been recycling forever. Larry, I do have one, uh, Mayor, I do have one other request or comment. Is there a, a chance to tour this facility? I'd kind of like to see what's available there so that I can see it firsthand. Maybe the council would like to do that, too.
Well, I can tell you firsthand, it's an amazing facility. But I can, we, I can get with this Hansen to see if that's, when, when, when they allow it, we can get in contact with her.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take this to the public for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application at the bottom of your screen. Or you can, if you've called in, you can dial star nine or six, depending on if you have a landline or mobile phone. Our moderator will unmute you and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anyone asking to talk on this item, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, so we'll return back to council for further discussion and a vote. Councilmember Bertrand.
I'd like to move the recommended.
Okay, we have a first, Councilmember Peterson.
I'll second that.
We have a first from Councilmember Bertrand and a second from Councilmember Peterson to approve the, to authorize the city manager to enter into the amended and restated franchise agreement with Green Waste Recovery Inc. for collection and disposal of garbage, recycling, organics, food waste, yard waste, and construction and demolition debris. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Um, aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Okay, this item passes unanimously. Councilmember Bertrand, did you have something?
Yeah, Larry, thank you for getting staff from the facility and, you know, the company. I appreciated their answers and definitely helped me understand things.
Well said, Councilmember Bertrand. We'll now move on to item 8E. This is a recreation registration system update. Welcome, Nikki.
Good evening, Mayor Brooks, councilmembers. Let me take a minute and prepare my screen. All right. So the item before you this evening is the Recreation Registration Management System. So in 2008, recreation contracted with Active Network, also known as ActiveNet, which is our current registration system, where anybody who would attend a recreation program, they would go online and register for that class or junior guard program. They could also come into the community center, speak with one of our front desk staff, and would also access ActiveNet and register through the same ActiveNet process. So it is, even though it's either online or through our front desk staff, it's a web-based registration system. And the implementation of this web-based system has significantly improved the registration service that we have been able to provide. Many of you may remember the long lines of junior guard registrations that apparently wrapped the building. So in 2008, when the city originally contracted with ActiveNet, it purchased an activities module and paid a one-time fee for that module. And then the ongoing service has been paying transaction and credit card fees, which are deducted from any income that ActiveNet collects from our residents registering. So they pay our fees by registering for something, and then ActiveNet deducts a set of fees, percentages of that transaction, including a credit card transaction fee. Then, once that's deducted, the check is mailed to the city. Now, in F, the fiscal year 1819, which was the last year that was uninterrupted by the pandemic, the city paid ActiveNet $39,308 in those registration transaction fees. In the two years since then, each year has been about $25,000 in fees, but we have not been operating as normal due to the pandemic. And so staff estimates that with, we, when we return to a post-pandemic operation, that continuing with ActiveNet would continue to cost about $40,000 in fees. Now, ActiveNet over the past few years has become a bit of a poor fit for the recreation division as we have been implementing new growth goals, particularly in relationship to the strategic plan and new activities that we have been providing, such as our after-school program. And so staff is seeking a system that would provide some mobile compatibility, which is a common request from residents, as our current system does not have great mobile compatibility, and better support systems, services, such as when front desk staff that are working with our ActiveNet system, when problems occur within the system, we reach out to those support services and they help us problem solve. So we would be looking for better support services from any system in the future. So in order to begin this process, staff reached out to a lot of local agencies to identify some products that are currently in use and that have good ratings, and ultimately decided to review five of those recommended registration systems. And after reviewing five, acquired quotes from three of those, one of which was ActiveNet, our current one, and what, one of the options would be to add additional modules that would expand the services that we are currently able to provide in order to help some of the problem solving. Ultimately, from those three quotes, we selected the top two that would be the best in the long term and arranged for a demonstration with the whole recreation staff to, to, so that it would be a, a good perspective of that system. And then we additionally reached out to other cities that are currently using those top two products in order to identify user feedback and go a little bit beyond the sales pitch. So after all that process, decided that Civic Plus, specifically the Civic Rec, the products that they have, which focuses on park and recreation registration management systems, is the best choice for our division. And Civic Plus is also the company that has recently purchased MuniCode, which is the city's current website provider. So currently, because of the way that ActiveNet would deduct the transaction fees from any payment that it collected, as it currently serves as our merchant account as well as our registration system, the, an ActiveNet, payments to ActiveNet is not an expense line in the recreation budget. The Civic Plus quoted us at, for a first year cost of $24,963, 50% of this is due at signing. The first year cost was a little more because it will involve training for our staff as well as the overall setup of our registration system. And then each year after that is quoted at $14,527. Now, as I said a minute ago, ActiveNet, not only is the registration management system, but it serves as our merchant account or gateway. Civic Plus partners with various gateways and we're working with our finance director in order to choose the appropriate gateway. That gateway or merchant account does additional payment transactions for any, for the payment process. So if it's a debit card, it's a certain percentage, usually pretty low, like 0.5%. If it's an American Express card, that credit card fee can be around 2.5%. Currently, any credit card processing fee for ActiveNet, we're paying 3%. So whatever merchant account we go with, staff anticipates that it is expected to be less than 3% for those payment transactions. And as we move forward, staff will incorporate any budget changes at the mid-year budget review. So the recommended action for this evening is to authorize the city manager to enter into an ongoing contract with Civic Plus to provide the city recreation division with a new registration management system. And I am available for questions at this time.
Any questions from council? Okay, so then we'll open this to public comments. If you'd like to make a com, oh, sorry, Councilmember Bertrand, you had a question?
Yes, I do. Nikki, it seems from your presentation that we're going to benefit in a couple ways, decrease upfront costs and also potential increases in efficiencies, as you talked about gateways for the finance department. I was wondering if you could comment more about that?
Well, yeah, so what's, what's really exciting about the opportunities that Civic Plus will be able or to provide us is that it is a, all, every, everything that they have to offer is in one package, whereas ActiveNet, we would buy module by module. So for example, we decided that suddenly we wanted to do point-of-sale opportunities, that if we were to do that with our current registration system, we would have to purchase a module in order to be able to do that, and then all the transaction fees would apply on top of that. With Civic Plus, point-of-sale is part of it. So if first, at some point down the road, we decide, I think we're going to start doing point-of-sale, it's already part of that process. So that's exciting for the recreation side. And then, yes, from my, I still have a lot to learn about gateways exactly, but from my understanding is that there will be some efficiencies in the finance department as for having, having a gateway relationship.
Okay. Is there a bundled fee, sort of like getting insurance for your car and your house or something, because we're going to be using two different products, I guess?
For, you mean between the gateway and the registration system?
And, and it's doing our website, I think, right? You mentioned, because it just purchased.
Oh, um, you know, I do, I don't know, but that's something that we can definitely work into, particularly if we end up using any other MuniCode products.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like that's a possibility. Uh, this sounds very exciting. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so we'll move this to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine or star six, depending on if you have a landline or mobile phone. Our moderator will unmute you and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised for this item, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll bring this back to council for further comment and a vote. Would like to begin.
Well, I'd like to. I'd like to move the recommend, to, to see this, uh, move forward, so I'd like to move the recommended action. Thank you.
Excellent. We have a first.
I'll go second that.
And I have a second from Councilmember Kaiser. Any other comments? Okay, can I have a, please have a roll call to approve the staff recommended action to authorize the city manager to enter into an ongoing contract with Civic Plus to provide the city recreation division with a new registration management system.
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
Hi, Green.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
This item passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item nine, which are 15 more items to go. Council, you ready? Do you have it in you? No, not tonight? Okay, well, item nine is adjournment. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Congratulations again to our future chief, Andy Dally, and thank you, staff, thank you, Samantha, thank you to our city manager. This was a big one tonight. There was a lot of really great things done for the City of Capitola this evening. So thanks to all the department heads. Have a great evening. We'll see you next time.
Thank you. Good night.